Mr. Antonio. Mr. Badger.
Here.
Mr. Bleefel.
Here.
Ms. Kiyabachi.
Here.
Mr. Golfin.
Here.
Ms. Karinaikis.
Here.
Dr. Morris. Mr. Walker.
Here.
Mrs. Ginsberg.
Here.
Isabel DeCosta.
Here.
Reed Harris.
Here.
Great, thank you so much. All right, we're now going to do the Pledge of Allegion and we have some helpers this evening. Could it come up here and help me with that? Thank you so much for your help. And welcome everyone to this January 27th meeting of the Whistahickin School Board. If you take a look at our agenda, you'll first see listed out our prior meetings. We had our annual reorganization on December 2nd. On December 9th was our audit committee and our regular public board meeting. On January 13th, we had both the communications committee and facilities and transportation meeting. And on January 21st was the racial equity oversight committee meeting. And we've listed our upcoming meetings. On February 3rd, we'll have our next regular public board meeting. February 10th, finance committee. February 18th, policy committee and racial equity oversight committee meetings. And February 24th will be our next work session. All right, now we have our presentations for this evening.
Okay, so tonight is the first of this year in welcoming some special guests from one of our schools to help us learn about that school. And this year, our first school to kick us off is Blue Bell Elementary School. And for that, I'm pleased to introduce Ms. Angela Farlow, the principal of Blue Bell, who will introduce to all of us her special guest tonight.
Thank you. Good evening, Whistahickin School Board members and guests. Thank you for joining us tonight. My name is Angela Farlow and I'm the principal of Blue Bell. It is my absolute pleasure to be here again to showcase another exciting program from Blue Bell. This one is called Critical Thinking Skills Seminar for First Graders, and it is led by enrichment teacher, Mrs. Kara Windler. So during tonight's presentation, I have my thinking cap on, so I'm, um, I should be doing this correctly, right? So during tonight's presentation, we'll introduce you to the primary educational thinking skill or PETS program and its engaging characters. We're going to celebrate the innovative thinking skills of some of our first graders who are joining us here. Just raise your hand when I say your name, okay? Eloise, Joy, Lucy, Camille, Lucas, Thatcher, and Audrey. And don't worry, you're going to see more of them in a second. And then, board members, like we love to do, we're going to engage you in a hands-on activity to demonstrate what it, what it means to think like a detective. So if you haven't done so already, you should have your detective badge created by our students for you. And by the end of the evening, we hope you'll share our enthusiasm for this program and see how it supports our mission of fostering lifelong learners equipped with critical thinking skills. Ready to dive in? Here's Mrs. Windler.
Okay. Thanks, everyone, for having us tonight. We are so excited to be here. We have been practicing and looking forward to meeting all of you. Uh, we hope you, uh, we hope you enjoy what we have to share with you tonight and, uh, see our, our enthusiasm for the critical thinking skills program. The PETS program is a systematic exploration program. It helps develop higher-order thinking skills. Um, it's a program that we do across the district in all of our elementary schools. So we're here tonight in Blue Bell. Our first graders in the district are taking part in this program, uh, developing those higher-order thinking skills by exposing them to complex cognitive skills such as analysis, synthesis, evaluation, uh, et cetera. And there are plenty of opportunities for differentiated instruction throughout the course of the program, um, that runs throughout the time period. So that's a lot to look at, um, but it is a systematic program. So we wanted to point out the four overarching thinking skills: urgent, divergent, evaluative, and potential perception. Within each of those types of thinking, we focus on one or two higher-order thinking skills that are on that third tier that we're seeing. Within each one of those, students are introduced to that type of thinking by the character that you see at the bottom. Those are the characters that we will meet tonight. Uh, and let's get started. The first type of thinking is convergent thinking, which is the ability to see intuitively, safely deductively, what we're practicing, what's the premise, and see interrelationship between clues to discover solutions. Eloise and Joy are going to read from moment to moment, predictive logic, and Lucy will introduce you to scientific thinking. Thank you, Eloise and Joy. Next, Lucy's going to talk to us about scientific thinking. Next, we have divergent thinking, which is a different type of skill set. That's the ability to give many responses to questions, to brainstorm many ideas, be flexible, optimal, and out of the box. So Camille's going to introduce us to Isabel, who loves to brainstorm. She's an inventor.
Defender thinking, brainstorm lots and lots of ideas. They look at things in unusual or wacky ways.
Going to talk to us about yarn spinner thinking.
Darn spinners thinkers love to play with words and use them in creative play. They use their imagination to weave colors.
Next is visual spatial perception, to be able to demonstrate memories in detail and enjoy hands-on activities. Thatcher's going to talk to us about magician thinking.
Obvious solutions. They visualize shapes in their, their minds to make predictions well-looked at.
And last, we have evaluative thinking. That's the ability to evaluate and offer something based on valid considerations. Audrey's going to introduce us to important evaluative thinking.
Evaluative thinking, on facts, not on views. Considerations make all decisions.
Thank you, Audrey. Okay, I hope you're ready. So tonight, we have prepared special badges that you all have so that you can practice your deductive logic skills. Again, Dudley the detective was the first character you learned about from Eloise and Joy. So we're going to give you the directions. It's beyond full, uh, slides. You do have some materials in front of you. This is an activity that our first graders do in the very first critical thinking skills lesson, the first time they meet Dudley. So we're going to listen to a mystery creature's story for a moment, and then your job is to draw pictures and think of the animals that you can hear us describing in the clues. Our first graders are going to take a seat right now while Mrs. Farlow and I read the clues, but then they're going to be able to first read this momentarily.
That's great.
Okay. Are you ready? Dudley, Rosalyn, Robin, and their friends in Crystal Pond's woods have a mystery for you to solve. Here are descriptions of four real animals. Three are friends and live in the woods. The fourth one is a mysterious stranger. Listen to the clues and help Dudley figure out who is who by drawing what you think these creatures are. Write down the kind of animal you drew. So Mrs. Farlow and I are going to read four clues. You have a box for each of the four clues, and you also have colored pencil markers near you.
So Mrs. Windler, before we do this, I want to let you know that when we do this activity with our first graders, we do not show them clues. They just listen. So if you really want to challenge yourself, you want the full experience, try not to look at the words and just listen and see if you can identify it, just like our first grade.
All right, first grade.
So first grade, can they do it?
They can. Okay, they can. Here we go.
My favorite afternoons are spent sunning on a log by the pond. When a rascal raccoon comes by, I ignore him by pulling my head, tail, and four feet into my house.
So that goes in box number one.
You guys need help from the first grader?
I think we, we, first, that is, first graders.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, in box number two.
Okay, okay.
For those who aren't ready, in box two. Who says, "Something very wise"? Maybe that's because when I'm not flying, I can turn my head. I miss box. Also, we're asking one question.
Big detectives here. Clue number three, you ready? Try not to look at the board. My love for honey sometimes gets me into a whole lot of trouble. When I stick my paw into the beehive, I usually get stung on my black nose. My brown fur helps to protect me everywhere.
And for those of us who aren't ready, in box four, our last creature. I'm afraid Rosalyn Robin spotted me last night sneaking through the woods. I'm sure she noticed my pointy hair and long hair. I know she does not feel safe while I'm around. She needn't worry. Even though my legs are short, I can travel very quickly, and I'll be gone by dawn. While we're putting our finishing touches on to our, our animals and people, natural, nature, rocks, obstacles, strangers, and circulating anyone who needs us. Okay, it's time to now. Use the clues to identify the animals. I know we don't have a whole lot of time to talk about that, so we just actually wanted to thank you for your presentation. We hope you had fun. Uh, we certainly had so much fun. Uh, I'm not sure if we have time to really talk through the clues, but we did want to show you how we wrap up each class. Um, we have, all right, are you ready with her? Okay, we always ask at the end, did we learn what it means to think critically today, or? Did we learn about the PETS program and we? Did we practice our detective thinking skills ever once? Most importantly, did we have fun today? Okay, so we wanted to say one more thing in appreciation of you and all you do, and on behalf of Blue Bell, we wanted to say,
Thank you for your time and all of you too for our school community.
Thanks, everyone. We're not sure if there was time for questions or if you had a question.
Yeah, there was time.
Oh, of course. Well, first, thank you so much. It was an amazing presentation, and it's awesome that you guys could just come up here and speak in front of a group. That is so wonderful. And, um, so I got, I'm so sad, but, um, yeah, I, I love this project. It was awesome, guys. Um, questions or comments?
I just want to say you guys did a great job. Thank you so much for coming tonight. It was great to learn from you and meet you all. Thank you, Blue Bell first graders.
Yeah.
Okay, we're going to do a picture in a few minutes, but I understand we have something else.
Need a solution.
Oh my goodness, I love this. Thank you so much, guys. This is wonderful. All right, so thank you so much for the gift, for, for appreciation of, thank you, and for the beautiful card. Thank you so much.
Great job.
Great job. We're going to get a picture before you guys leave. Um, who would like to join me? Dan, who does I mean?
Amy, I ju- would just like to tell them that I love their thinking caps.
Thank you so much. They use these every week, critical thinking skills lessons, so they are definitely well-loved already.
Great job.
Yeah. It's so much, so much, I have a first grader. I have a first grader. Yeah, it's kind of about, can we get? Um, thank you, guys. I can't wait to sit down with them for a second. Hold on, thank you. All right, we're going to go.
All right, so our Blue Bell families are welcome to stay, um, or you can leave at this point. Um, I would, there are cookies out there. If you haven't seen them, guys. Please get some cookies on your way out. Thank you. And I was excited to hear, um, I shared with them that I have a first grader also, and I heard that they do this at all the elementary schools, the critical thinking. That's awesome. Let's go out to ask my daughter about it when I get home. All right, log back in. All right, so we'll move on now to our Whistahickin High School monthly highlights.
Good to be back. It feels like we haven't been here in a while. Um, at the high school, we're just entering the third marking period, so we're wrapping up with midterms. Um, Whistling and National Honor Society hosted a cocoa and cramp study session for the freshmen in the library, so that was a huge success and helped them get ready for their first midterms. We're also looking forward to, on February 1st, upcoming, ASA is hosting their annual Lunar New Year at the Whistahickin Middle School. So there's going to be traditional food, dishes, and celebrations, so that's always a fun time. Um, also, a shout out to the newly established girls wrestling team. So that's exciting. Daria was the one who helped to start that. That was cool to see, that we're branching out in the extracurriculars. And don't forget to follow Dr. Blair at ProudToBeWHHS on Instagram.
And continuing that, we're really excited to implement the new bonus block, which is actually going to be first used today, I'm not sorry, not today, this week, Friday, uh, with the day five. And Whistahickin also has the PMA, which is the Pennsylvania Music Education Association, and we had a handful of students qualify for both the district band and the district orchestra, so shout out to them. Mr. Conahan, uh, hosted the music fest to share what the high school music program will look like, so really proud of that. And core selection is live for all ninth to 11th graders. And another cool thing is that the So Fresh Social is going to be in, on February, December, uh, February 28th. And this is really cool because the freshmen and the sophomore get their own dance now. It's traditionally always been the juniors and the seniors, with the freshman not being able to get to any single one of them. So that's a really cool opportunity for them, and the money there is going to be raised, is going to go towards the freshman trip, so we're really excited to see how it's going to turn out for them.
Great, thank you so much for that update. Does anyone have any questions or comments? Steffi?
I just think, uh, thank you for the updates. All great. Maybe you can share with the rest of the board, because they might not be high schoolers, what the bonus block, um, kind of gives you guys, because I think it's the coolest thing ever.
So with the bonus block, traditionally on days five and six, which is our longer days, which we will have four periods for classes, um, in the middle of the day, like around 11, we would have what we call IE, which is enrichment. Or, yeah, and enrichment time. So with that, usually on day five, you would have a fun IE, so you can like go sign up on Infinite Campus. And you can have, uh, an IE where you would play sometimes badminton or a silent study hall or reading, or just hang out with your teacher. And on day six, IE was traditionally the academic IE, where you go meet up with your teachers to address any academic concerns, or just need more help in a subject, or just review time, or you could also use it as a study hall. So now with the block day, we're moving that time period from the middle of the day, from around 11, to the very first half of the day. So what that would mean is that school technically does start at 7:37 AM. However, you're not required to be there at 7:37 on the dot. So once that period ends, everyone has to be in for a session, but that period is very, very flexible. You can go to the upper cafeteria to socialize, or you can go to one of the auditoriums to have a silent study hall. Or you can go to a gym and play in open gym. Sometimes they might have badminton now, maybe volleyball or basketball. Or you could also use that time to meet up with a teacher, and some teachers are thinking about having like labs per subject. So some of the math teachers are thinking, instead of having individual teachers address students' needs, they, they can team up maybe, so that could be more effective. For example, my history teachers, on Friday, they're going to have a DBQ writing session that's going to start at 7:37 on the dot. So it's a very awesome opportunity, because you can also use that time to sleep in a little bit more, which, you know, is also awesome, because that means students are going to be more refreshed for the school day. And yeah, and for the science APs, we're going to have that time, which was originally during IE, that's going to be at the beginning of the day. So for those students who would traditionally have a day five or day six IE, instead of coming in at 11 for IE, you come in in the morning. And from there, you don't lose any time with your science APs, because they typically require extra labs and work, and really, it's a win-win situation for everyone.
Wow, that sounds awesome. And thank you for explaining that. Um, any questions from anyone about that?
Is it just two days a weekend is about, you're saying?
Uh, two days a cycle.
Two days, two, uh, six-day cycle?
Yeah, day five and day six.
And are many students, is this already started?
No, no, it's going to start this Friday.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, I'm excited to hear back maybe in a month or so to see like how, how is it going or how you're using the time. I'm curious to hear. Now Reed, will you get to sleep in or do you have morning practice?
Um, that's to be determined. So I have a science IE on Friday, but Monday, we would have morning practice, but I'm hoping I get to sleep.
I get to see Reed swim at the Upper Dublin Whistahickin Meet, and he did a great job. It's really cool to see him, so I'm glad I got to see him. He's a great swimmer.
Any other comments or questions? All right, well, thank you again for that report. All right, now we will have, um, our annual. Alright, now we will have our annual state assessment report.
Yes, good evening. Thank you. It's hard to follow the Blue Bell students and the high school students. I'm gonna take off my detective badge just for now. I'm joined this evening by Dr. Schmidt, our Director of Teaching and Learning, and she'll be co-facilitating our conversation this evening with our state assessment results annual report. So thank you again for this opportunity, and let's jump in. Okay, there we go. So the purpose of our presentation this evening is to provide a high-level overview of our district state assessment results, and we do this annually. As a reminder, when you look at the data, so we're taking a historical review, looking back at the years 2019 through 2024, which is the most recent state data that we have. But it's just a reminder that the assessments were canceled in the spring of 2020 due to the global pandemic, so as we move through and look at the slides, you'll notice that that year is missing. So we'll give, sort of frame out the presentation for our discussion. We'll start with sharing a little, making sure we have shared understanding of what state assessments are. And then we'll explain how the data are being presented across the grass regarding our demographic peer group that you'll see on each slide. And then we'll move through each subject area with English Language Arts, Literature for grades three, five, six, eight, and grade 11, and the same for math and algebra and science and biology. And for each of those subject areas, we'll pause at the end of each subject area to share action steps for that specific subject area, and then we'll move on. And at the end of the presentation, of course, we'll talk about overall assessment data, how that's used in the district. And then, of course, at any time, if you have questions, you're welcome to interject, or you're welcome to hold them until the end. Okay, so thinking about state assessments, the Every Student Succeeds Act is where this assessment requirement lies for all states to test students in reading and math once a year in grades three through eight, as well as once in high school, and states almost also assess students in science, in elementary school, middle school, and high school. And so that's why we see the grade spans that we see here with the PSSAs for students in grades three through eight. And then our, for English Language Arts and Mathematics, and then Science for grades four and eight. And then the Keystone exams is where we have our high school assessments occur, and they are end-of-course high school exams in Algebra I, Literature, and Biology. These scores are banked and reported for students in grade 11, so when they're in grade 11, their score is reported. And what that means is, a student may have Algebra I, for example, in grade 10, they may have Algebra I in grade seven. Whenever they have Algebra I, their score is banked and reserved for when they are in grade 11, that's when it's reported. And so having some insight and understanding of this sort of banking is important to understand, the Keystone exam. And as a reminder, the Spring 2020 PDE, the Pennsylvania Department of Education waived the Keystone exams for all students, and there were specific criteria that were required in order to be considered for the waiver. The reason we're referencing it here again this year is because the class of 2025, and those are the students who are, whose data we're looking at from 11th grade last year, so this is the Spring 2024 data. These are the last data set that we'll see where the waiver has an impact on the reporting of those scores for the Keystone exam. So this should be the last year that I have to explain the Keystone waiver and the impact on the data. Okay, so when we move through our presentation this evening, you'll see the demographic peer group on each of the slides when we present the data. And so we're sharing the peer group that we're referencing here are neighboring school districts that share similar demographic factors as listed on the slide here. And those districts include Colonial School District, Capra Horseshoe North Penn, Springfield Township, and Upper Dublin. And the factors are listed here in terms of what we are referring to when we say demographic. So we'll start with English Language Arts, and this is where we're thinking about our reading and writing standards. And then looking at grades three through five, again, I'm gonna just pause a moment to explain the way this slide is set up, because this is the first data side that we're presenting here. So you'll see the slide shows percentage of students in grades three through five who scored proficient or advanced on the English Language Arts PSSA. Again, you'll notice the year 2020 is not included, because the assessments were canceled that year. The gray line on the bottom represents the average of all Pennsylvania school districts. The orange line in the middle represents the average of the five demographic peer groups that I just referenced a moment ago. And then the blue line at the top represents the scores for Washtaken School District, and you'll see 74.1% of students scored proficient or advanced on this assessment. And so while there's a slight decrease from last year, as you can see, we do continue to score better than our peers and the statewide average. And in a moment, we'll talk about, again, action steps, because while it's great to say we are performing higher than our demographic peers and higher than the statewide average, we aspire to do more than that. We aspire to ensure that our trend line is continuing to grow. And so we'll talk a little bit about some of the action steps that we are taking as we look at our data and drill down and sort of think about what are the needs as it relates to English Language Arts. So for each slide, I won't spend as much time. This is our slide showing English Language Arts PSSA's results for grades six through eight. Here we see approximately 77% of students scored proficient or advanced on the ELA PSSA. And then as we look at the Keystone exam, here for the literature Keystone exam, we can see approximately 86% of students performed proficient or advanced on the Keystone for 2024. And so that is remaining relatively steady from last year's data. And now Dr. Schmidt is gonna share some of our team's action steps in ELA.
Thank you, Dr. Schmidt. Looking ahead, when we take a look at our data and we think about our action steps and subject areas, we continue to take a multifaceted approach to our different systems and supports in order to ensure that we are helping our students find success. And so within ELA in particular, our action steps really focus on enhancing our multi-tiered systems of support and our frameworks within academics with a focus on core instruction and placing emphasis on that core instruction, on our differentiation strategies, our small group instruction practices, because most of our students should be finding success in that instruction, and we want to make sure that we have practices in place to support that. The other component of our framework or MTSS, the heart of that, is having a data-minded approach. And so we want to make sure that we're looking at data through multiple lenses, whether it's at the district level, school level, individual classroom level, that we're looking at that data, students, groups of students. And we're approaching that data analysis through an asset-based lens, so that we're leveraging our students' strengths, also meeting their needs. Another important component to our MTSS framework is thinking about the alignment of skills and resources, so that we can, again, best support our students, not only with core instruction, with core resources in ELA, but also thinking about skills in ELA and additional resources that we would need to provide additional layers of instruction to students who are needing those tier-two and tier-three interventions, like jars. So that's a process that we're working on and refining from K through eight, and then we're working in high school on thinking about the warning system and ways that we get my students. Again, at the heart of all of that is professional development and support for staff. So at the elementary level, we continue to work with staff and building those foundational skills, which are really essential to helping develop for students strong readers and writers at that level. And another area of focus that we're finding across the different grade levels is our text-dependent analysis, so that's how we're writing in response, sorry, yes, writing in response to reading in terms of, you know, reading texts, responding to prompts, and being able to pull that essential evidence from the text in order to, you know, support for claims and responses. And so professional development, like I said, is the key component. Our instructional coaches are really an asset to us. Their in-class rooms, modeling lessons for teachers, working with, you know, different grade levels on, you know, highlighting some of the skill areas. We have some differentiation pressure work that's been happening in middle school, our ELLA departments, so just a lot of core components that are helping to build that continuous system.
Some of the action steps you'll notice, you'll notice this visual will be presented for each subject area in terms of the action steps, because for every subject area, we're looking at the systems and support that we have in place and working on continuous improvement within our MTSS framework. But you heard Dr. Schmidt reference some specific elements. One example I'll lift up is just how the teams have drilled down into the data to identify what are the specific skills that students need to work on to continue to grow instruction. And one example was text-dependent analysis, so that's a specific skill that teachers are working on, that principals are looking at the data and identifying, this is an area that's not a part of this presentation, drilling down into the skill level. That's what's happening in the building, and we'll talk later about how assessment data are used. But I wanted to reference that, because it's important in terms of framing and understanding what the data conversations are like at the building. So we'll move into mathematics now.
Dr. Dewan, I'm sorry to interrupt. Should we ask our ELA questions now, or would you prefer to wait till the end?
It's, you're welcome to. You're welcome to ask them.
I just had a quick question about, I know that grade three and five, three to five was sort of grouped together, but I know that in 2022, we added the Wilson Foundation Program to help with reading. So the current fifth graders wouldn't have been affected by that, but I believe the third and fourth graders would be. Do you see any difference in ELA scores with those cohorts knowing that they have that additional instruction?
Sure. I can, so just based on the work that's been happening at building levels, that's actually an area that our third-grade teachers had identified based on our whole data. So thinking about our district assessments, our curriculum-based assessments, our third-grade group having gone through three years of foundations, that has been a strength. So they're seeing within that group having a much stronger core in their foundational skills than we've seen with past.
Thank you so much, and I do know that they are spending a lot of time with TDA's at the elementary school, because I hear about that from my kids, so I know it's happening.
Thank you for that. Any other questions about English Language Arts? Alright, so we'll move on to mathematics. We'll start with grades three through five. Here we can see the proficiency level, is it 76% of our students are proficient or advanced in math in this grade? We did see a decrease in testing back in 2021, and then we sort of saw this positive trend and now a slight decrease in the 2024 data, so that's something that we're noticing, and we'll have conversations about some of the actions that we're moving forward for math. And then taking a look at sixth through eighth grade, we certainly aren't seeing a dip here with 53 proficiency students, 53% of students are proficient or advanced, which while it's aligned to our peer group in terms of what their data look like, and certainly far greater than the statewide average, it is an area that we are, of course, paying close attention to, and we want to see growth and improvements in our math data at this level. And then here with our Keystone proficiency trends, we saw an increase after the remarkable dip that is, appears to be happening here. And we see an increase after that 2023 dip, but here is where we have to be cautious because of that 2020 waiver. Not all of our students are represented in the data for 2024, the same way they're not all represented in the 2023 data or 2022 data. And so that's skewing the data across the state, across all districts in a pretty remarkable way. Still, looking at the students' data that we have here at 62, approximately 62%, we know that this is an area that we need to continue to grow. And I'm gonna turn it over to Dr. Schmidt to share some of the work that we're doing in math. Again, our action steps and mathematics in terms of the visual representation here is similar to what you saw for ELA, but she'll speak a little bit to some of the specific areas that we're growing and working to grow in this area.
Thank you, Dr. Dewan. So similar to the Language Arts, you know, we are placing continued emphasis on enhancing our multi-tiered systems of support. Again, having that core instruction and trying to build up and strengthen our, again, through these differentiation practices, through construction, and also being mindful of, again, those additional supports and resources that we have available to support additional layers of construction that we need to provide through those interventions in the classroom. Again, building that data-minded approach, so really fostering that asset-based lens, so that we're leveraging our students' strengths, thinking about our students, where their strengths lie in mathematics, while looking at those areas of need. Fortunately for us right now, we're in alignment with our mathematics curriculum cycle. And so we've been doing a lot of work in our initial stages of review cycle, taking a look at our standard alignment, having conversations across grade levels, so not only looking at that alignment within grade levels, that vertical alignment from K to 12. And an outcome of that process has been for us to develop the K-12 work, so that we can identify those high-pride skills and standards within each of the grade levels. So that way, we know what those high-leverage thinking skills are in terms of application of mathematics across to the grade bands. Professional learning has also been at the forefront of our work, and we've started our professional development in order to build up to implementation of changes in our math curriculum that will start next year. And the focus of our math professional development really has been focused on building math thinkers, helping students become doers of math. So really building skill sets in the areas of math thinking, math reasoning, engaging students in math discourse, different types of problem solving, math retention, thinking about strategies that we use to help students retain their mathematics, actually, especially our secondary teachers attended just in January. So we really are trying to be able to talk about math instruction, you know, through different lenses, so that we can shift our instruction from more teacher-centered classroom to student-centered classroom, where they have the opportunity to engage in explorations, inquiry in math as a way to develop those, you know, math competencies, so that they can apply them to concrete math procedures. So again, professional learning is really a part of it too, and our instructional coaches have been a great support to us.
Dr. Dewan, I think, is it correct that the middle school, we did add additional instructional time for math in six through eight as part of the new schedule? Changes to the schedule, there has been some additional time devoted to math and ELA.
And when you talked about additional supports for math, does that include one-on-one or tutoring time, or is that more small group?
I would say both, in terms of thinking about the core instruction in the classroom, using that time to ensure students have opportunities for small group instruction during math instructional time, that actually was in math classroom last week, and I saw a teacher doing that where there was whole group instruction that started the lesson, and then transitioned to pulling students in smaller groups to meet their individualized needs. So that's certainly a part of it. And then I know we have math lab support at the high school and middle school, there is some strategic support that's available for Trojan time, but I missed anything.
And we, and just thinking about professional, again, at the schedule and the additional time. Middle school department is also currently going through a DI refresher training session to help support them with, you know, the structure of that math block time at middle school and how to get applied instruction to students in setting, and then also focus by those.
And DI is differentiated instruction.
And I'm sorry, just one follow on. The, the middle school trend lines follow through the years our peer group. But then this year, the peer group joined us, right? Is, is there any discussion with the schools that are peer group? What their techniques were to bring their trend line up?
Not specifically related to the data, but we've been in touch with our peer groups as part of our review process. One of the things that we'll, we'll be doing next year is implementing new math resource processes towards the instruction and the type of learning, teaching and learning that we want to see in the classrooms. Again, that's student centered classroom. And so we've been in touch with some of our partner districts who are currently utilizing some of the resources that we've been looking at and piloting in our classrooms to learn from them. You know, what some of the shifts were that they had to be thoughtful about with some of those instructional changes, thinking about implementation and how different ways that they were helping to support the teachers with some of those shifts.
Thank you.
Thank you. I just had a quick comment, I suppose. I know that in fifth grade this year, and I don't know how long it's been this way. The math is at the very end of the day. It's like from two to three ten, I believe, which is the very last subject of the day. And sometimes I think kids are sort of just like done at the end of the day and maybe don't quite absorb as much or able to learn as much rate. And so I wonder, obviously, the principals are in charge of the schedule, but I just like wonder if that is making a difference. I don't, again, I don't know how long it's been that way or if it's just this year that was changed because I know the schedule had changed at elementary school. But I just had concern around possibly having math every day at the end of the day for the fifth graders when we're seeing this dip in math in middle school. I don't know, maybe something to explore.
For that, thank you. Certainly something we'll have conversations with the principals. Anything else on math for now? Move into science, starting with grade four. We see on grade, in grade four, science in the, on the P S S As, we see approximately ninety percent of our students' results were proficient or advanced. And then looking at science in grade eight, here we have seventy-seven percent proficient or advanced. And then with biology, with the Keystone exam, we see what we like, you know, in terms of looking at that sort of two-year trend of recovery from that dip that we saw in two. And again, we have to be cautious about the data that we're seeing across this time span because of the waiver. Turn it over to Dr. Schmidt then to share some of the action steps that we're taking in science.
So in science, so in my department, we're continually in review. And so it's, it's an ongoing cycle that we have in place. And so in science, science actually preceded our, our math review process. And so the work that we were doing in science, again, was working on some shifts in for instruction and those differentiated practices so that we're meeting the needs of small groups or individuals within our science classrooms. Also, Pennsylvania adopted the new steel standards, so that's science, technology, engineering and environment literacy standards. And so with that were some shifts in what science teaching and learning like. And the emphasis on phenomena based teaching, so helping students to understand the application of science and doing science in connection with the real world as opposed to really placing that emphasis on science content itself. In our classrooms, especially this year, again, we've just had some shifts in resources and science. And so our students are doing a lot of exploring, investigating and just doing of science. Getting content, so we're excited to see what's what shifts are. And we've been dedicating all the professional development time this year to supporting the education. So that's just the essential to our teachers, even at the elementary level, we know we're always carving out that time to. Math, like majority of science this year.
Thank you, Dr. Schmidt. Any questions about science for now?
I have a quick, I do have a question. I know that the curriculum is way more hands-on and I think that's amazing. Are we supporting the teachers in terms of getting them the necessary supplies in which to perform all of these hands-on experiments? Because I know sometimes there's quite a lot of materials involved with some of these. And I've kind of been hearing like different classes that get different things based on maybe what the teacher picks up or like are we funding the experiments along with the curriculum is I guess what I'm asking.
We are, so the, the core components of the, the math resources, there are elements that are built into kits. In science, yes, did I say, I'm sorry. So in our science kits, thank you, there are, again, materials that are built into that. There is also separate equipment that we purchased and is supporting in grade three through five. The resource that we have has something that's called teacher sourced items. And so we've worked with the principals to identify what those items are. Because in most cases, those are consumable items. So it might be, and I say consumable and perishable items. So it might be bringing in like flour, to use flour in an exploration or what have you. So that's not something that we can buy and stock and keep. It's something that we have to work with the building principals to either purchase or to reimburse. But it's something that teachers would use in that period of time and then not be able to like score a keep, if that makes sense.
Any other questions about science for now? I want, I want to just briefly mention the Pennsylvania Future Ready Index, which is a resource for district leaders, school leaders, teachers and families to access even more information about state measures and other measures of accountability. So I always like to put a plug in for people to know that this resource is available. And, you know, we've, we've been talking a lot about the state assessments this evening and we know how critically important assessments are in the teaching and learning process. It helps to drive what we're doing and how we're supporting our students, how we're knowing what their areas of need are and what their areas of strength are. Our district's website has our assessments page that outlines the various types of assessments that we use and how teachers use the information in the district. The focus is always on how to improve our instruction and support to students. That's the, the reason why we want to make sure that we are using the data in a variety of different ways to ultimately promote student achievement. And so I reference here the multiple ways that data are used. And so when we think about how teachers use the data, they're using that assessment data to reflect on their instructional practices. They're thinking about, as I mentioned, student strengths and areas of needs in order to plan for future instruction, in order to adapt instruction in the moment. Our school leaders are using that data to set school and grade level goals, having conversations with their grade level teams, looking and drilling down into specific skill areas to identify ways to support staff or continuing to support our students. And then, of course, as district administrators, we're using the assessment data to inform our continuous improvement efforts. That's, that's ultimately what we know that we need to do. And that helps drive the curriculum review process. It helps us identify areas for professional learning for staff. It helps us identify areas for supporting school leaders as they're supporting teachers in understanding and using the data. And so this sort of bigger picture of how data are used is important for us to know. And then this slide is just a sort of a recapitulation of what you heard this evening. We walked through each of the subject areas. We talked about continuous improvement in terms of focusing on refining instruction, leveraging data and building capacity to ensure that our students are getting exactly what they need to continue to grow and thrive and ultimately achieve. And so through those continuous improvement efforts within our M T S S framework, that's going to help drive the outcomes that we're hoping to see for our students. I want to thank Dr. Schmidt for joining me this evening to review some of those action steps that she shared throughout each of the subject areas. And then we'll pause again for any additional questions from the board.
Great, thank you so much for the presentation. I did have a couple of questions. So as far as like testing, do we like do practice tests with the students to prepare them for sitting for a lengthy period of time? Because I, I know I'm speaking to like a friend of mine, her son has difficult times sitting still for long periods of time to take these tests. And I know I'm speaking to her, he doesn't always perform well on them, but he's a good student otherwise, just not a good test taker. So what do we do to like help prepare the students for test taking? Because I'm, I'm sure there's other students that are out there.
I'll take it. And so we don't, I would not say that we practice the test necessarily, but what you're, what you're referring to is really helping students to develop strategies. And some of that is stamina, building stamina for being able to sit and consistently sort of focus on an assessment or focus on schoolwork for any length of time. And so building, helping students to build their stamina throughout the year is something that our teachers do work on. I would not say that they necessarily frame it in the context of sitting down with a paper pencil test or anything like that. But we know that that's an element of assessment taking that is something students need to develop around. The other thing that I want to reference here is in thinking about test taking strategies. So aside, aside from stamina, there are test taking strategies that we help students to learn and to know how to use and apply. Is there anything I'm missing, Dr. Schmidt? Can I think of just a theory?
Just thinking about the state assessments and the fact that the state is moving towards online testing. So that's something that we've taken, taken steps towards, helping our students have exposure to and prepare for online assessments. We, we started at certain grades of subject areas a couple of years ago. Last year, we expanded to grade eight as well as the high school, and then the administration that's coming up. Right, we'll be including grade three. And so Department of Education has provided a lot of online tools and tutorials. And so teachers have been utilizing and starting to take those into classrooms. Again, just to get some scripture and additional practice with the class that's going to be something next thing.
And when, when the teachers get those scores for their, for their students, I'm like, I've seen them during the, the conferences, typically in the fall, the teacher will pull them out and go over them with the parent. Do they, do they get a breakdown of like, not just the score, but these are the specific areas? Like on the teacher end, do they get like, like T D As for example? Do we, do they get a breakdown of what the student really needs some extra help in?
Yeah, so the, the state provides us with data within each of the different reporting areas. So for a particular student, we can look at, look at those reporting areas provides us with a strength profile within reporting category. So we can see where the students, you know, demonstrated strengths relative to those areas and skills in those areas. There's areas of needs, yes.
And in addition to that, for a teacher, there, your, your question around a singular student, thank you for that, Dr. Schmidt. And that teacher also gets information about the, the class, sort of looking at patterns and being able to reflect on instructional practices as in response to that. So that's also a very helpful tool. And again, with the building principals looking across the grade level band, they can also look and identify what are the trends as it relates to those skill areas so that they can support their teachers in, in holding those.
And speaking to that point, so I, I'm sure, you know, some teachers have been here teaching a much longer period of time, made of the drill, know what's going to be expected with the task, there could be newer teachers that are less familiar. Do we see any sort of trend like with, like with specific teachers, like the length that they've been here? Do we offer additional training then to certain teachers that may have a poor performing class? Like, how is that a step?
Couple things. The first is all of the teachers have training around the assessment and knowing how to support students, knowing how to prepare for the assessment period. And so no matter how many years you've been here, you're still going to have that training opportunity. So, so our new teachers and veteran teachers alike. To your other point, in terms of reflecting on sort of identifying where there might be some potential areas for growth for a teacher, those are conversations principals are having with their teachers. And that's why I referenced sort of the principal being able to look across the grade level to see what are the trends, what are the areas? And also what are the critical conversations with individual teachers? And it, it is always taken from the perspective of supporting the teacher and helping them to grow and strengthen their instructional practices. And so yes, to both of your questions.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
And yeah, I think those are all my questions. Who else has questions? Debbie?
So thank you for all the information and the great presentation. You kind of alluded to it in, in one of the answers that you gave to Amy about, you know, the teacher looks at the grade at the entire class, the principal's looking at the entire school. But have you also, like, three to five is a pretty big cohort, right? Like, have we looked at the data to see if there's any trends across grades? Do we have like perhaps a cohort or a segment of students that is bringing in way down or way up? That may be skewing our data would be one of my questions. And then how do you kind of streamline or take into consideration the changes in the sample size? Because we do have like that up and down that goes on, which could skew the data as well. So I, I'm wondering how, and maybe we just can't, you know, it is what it is. But that, that would be another, another piece of like, how are we, how are we doing the analysis?
To your second question, that is something that is taken into consideration. At the end of the day, we're using, we're using the data that we have. So even if the sample size is particularly small because of the waiver, for example, we don't nullify the entire data, right? We still use that to help drive decisions that need to be made and support that needs to be provided to our teachers to ensure that our students are better equipped in that next cohort. So, so yes, we do take that into consideration in the conversations around what we're noticing in the data trends, but we still act on what we see in the data. To your first point about looking at trends across the grade level, yes, and that goes back to the question, right? What I was just referencing there around looking across each. So for tonight's presentation, our board presentation is always a very high level overview. But in the buildings, they are drilling down, in our conversations with our principals, we are drilling down. It gets messy and awesome because we can answer some questions and look for trends and look for patterns and look for gaps. And that can help drive decisions that we're making around professional learning to help our instructional practices, to help our students, it's a party there. So, yes.
Excellent. And one final question, because this is the one thing that I'm always curious about, like, and I don't know, our schools are receiving the data before our students and their families do. But I remember receiving this packet in the mail for my children over the summer and they're way done with that class. So I guess my question is, how does it get integrated? Both as a learning or maybe that grade, but also for that student moving forward? That was always a big disconnect for me.
Thank you for the question. So teachers have access to students' data from their previous years. So if I'm a fifth grade teacher, I can access my students in my fifth grade class, looking at their fourth grade data from the previous year. So that's the first way in which a teacher would be able to utilize that information. The other point though, in terms of the fourth grade teacher who no longer has that student, it, it's the, the state assessment data are not intended to be informing a current teacher's instructional practices for that fourth grader that's in my class this year. That's not the intention of the state assessment data. And so teachers use other data to help drive their decisions around identifying what the student's strengths and areas of need are. And that's why our local assessment data is so important and, and referenced earlier this evening because we have to use other measures to identify students' needs when they're with the teachers in that year. So thank you for bringing that up. So it is something that the next year's teacher can utilize. But to your point, the teacher this, you know, in that current year, that data is not very informative for them with that student. Thank you for your question.
Any other questions or comments?
Yeah, I just have a question about, you know, obviously some of the scores are like a little bit disturbing, right? Fifty-three percent in math is just really hard to, to digest. And I guess, you know, one of the things you said is we're trying to rebuild or building staff capacity. Like have we, I assume we've already been doing that or trying as best we can to do it within the budget. What, what do you see, if anything, like we could do differently? Or can we add staff or basically what can we, what's something new that we're doing? I know we talked about adding minutes of instruction, which I think would be valuable. Any other things specifically that's new, like, because the trend is just concerning right now?
Absolutely. When we talk about building staff capacity, we're referring to helping to improve instructional practices. So building the capacity of the staff we have. And so that references professional learning opportunities and training and working with our instructional coaches and helping them to develop their skills around instruction. and helping them to develop their skills around instruction, specifically in mathematics. We reference this evening also the curriculum review process, which is a big part of what we're looking at in terms of identifying the curriculum resources that we're using and the ways in which we're instructing in math. So Dr. Schmidt referenced some of the sort of shifts in thinking about math instruction, which is important. So when we think about building staff capacity, that's what, that's what we're, that's what we are needing to focus on in developing our teachers. Does that answer your question?
Yeah. And then do we ever look at like, let's say there's a district that is way more proficient than us in math. I don't know who it would be, but maybe there is. Do we ever look and say, what curriculum are they using or what instruction are they using? And then look at that as an option for our district?
Yes. And as we've gone through our, our math review process, for example, that's been a part of our process. And so right now we're, we had our, some of our teachers piloting two resources that we were looking at. And then, as I mentioned earlier, part of our process is also then connecting with school districts about their implementation of the resources, how they work through and navigated shifts in instruction, how they help to build capacity with the staff. So we are trying to connect with our, our partner districts and try to get some of that information to, to help inform us as we continue to move forward.
Thank you for that question. And absolutely, fifty-three percent is concerning. It is not okay with us. Even if it is what our other peer demographically similar districts are performing, even if it is higher than statewide averages, it's fifty-three percent and it is concerning. It is absolutely concerning. And a lot of the professional learning that we are knowing we need to do for our staff is, is something we have to target.
I just have one final question and kind of alluded to Amy's question about kind of test preparation. But I know they do the MAPS test. A lot of times on a computer is my understanding. Is that something that is helping them being prepared for like the format of the standardized testing or is that completely different? It's just a curiosity question more.
So there are some elements of the MAPS assessment that are similar. So when students are exposed to, you know, choice questions, when we think about test taking strategies, that's a way that they can begin to implement those test taking strategies using that online platform. You know, when we talk about, you know, length of testing or MAPS assessment, you know, students are working through computer adapted items. And so the length of the assessment is longer than some of our curriculum based assessments. So that's another opportunity for students to build that stamina with the assessment as compared to some of our like smaller unit assessments if teachers are administering those online as well. So yes.
Thank you so much.
I do have a question. Based on the trends that everybody has been looking at, they track similarly between our district, our peers, and then all districts. Obviously, some track downward, not in ways we want them to be, but it seems to be consistent that we're not an outlier, but they all seem to be trending in the same direction. Given that, is the county or the Commonwealth allocating any resources to figure out if what systemic type of issues there may be? Because as you see, it's just not, it was the Hicken issue or a peer or it's everybody. And we, I think we can track it back to when the pandemic started, there's some trends. But what is the county or Commonwealth doing in order to maybe stem that tide, maybe allocate resources?
I mean, just from the county standpoint, I think that's, that is where we've been able to engage in professional and opportunities. IU has been fantastic in, you know, bringing in mathematicians, math experts, and providing a multitude of different sessions over the years to support districts with math instruction. Just based on some of the concerns we've expressed about needing additional needs. The state, I would say, just in terms of assessment resources, you know, they provide practice items and that really just helps teachers to build an understanding around how questions are assigned, what the expectations are for students and responses. That's really more so about testing logistics. But they do provide that information to districts each year in preparation for the assessments.
I could, I could add too, thinking of your question, Marshall. The, remember the state, what we're tracking here is what the state deems efficient. And if the state in a given year decides that a different cut score needed to be proficient, maybe higher than last year or lower, that is going to explain a lot of the common, when the, when the two lines track parallel to one another or three lines parallel to each other, that's almost assuredly because the state decided a different score was proficient, either higher or lower. It's when the lines have a different slope is when the owner of that line, be it the district or the peer to the state, is to think about what's happening at their their own teaching and learning. If that makes sense, because you could, it's, it's in a given year that the state can say, well, the cut score is now fifty-two. Last year was fifty-one. Whatever is going to be a little less.
Well, I understand how you may be tracking that. But I would think that they would then come up with a goal then. So how do we get from fifty-one to fifty-two to seventy-seven next year, sixty-three across the board?
They would, they, they do have some resources as Dr. Schmidt and Dr. Wad have noted, but what they also might do is independent of that thought process, just change the cut score. Because remember, like it's, if, if the raw score in the test ends up being like seventy-two is a proficient a given year. Okay. So we all have that and then all the trend lines reflect that. And then if the state somehow, for whatever reason, decides sixty-seven next year is a proficient school, whatever is going to trend out because it's a little bit easier to get sixty-seven on a raw score than seventy-two.
And not to get into the weeds, but do they look also at questions like, let's say a large percentage of students get the same question wrong? There could be a question design issue?
Yes, just like the SATs.
Yeah, actually.
Sometimes they test out new question types and designs.
Great. Any other questions or concerns? All right. Well, thank you again for the presentation.
Thank you. And thank you, Dr. Schmidt. Thank you for the opportunity to share.
All right. Well, that now brings us to our first public comment period. And the board appreciates hearing from the community. A maximum of five speakers will be heard on the same topic. Please limit your comments to three minutes. In the interest of fairness and in order to treat all speakers equally, it's not our practice to engage in dialogue with speakers. When appropriate, we will follow up with responses on board docs. I want to approach the podium, please state your name, your municipality of residence, and the topic on which you're speaking. Same for our virtual guests as well. So if I need to start, the first public comment period is on agenda items on wait. And Eric Rudolph, agenda item sixteen point one. Before you start, I'll just remind everyone, we do have to chime. So you're not alarmed if you hear it.
So I'm Eric Rudolph, I'm thirty-seven Montgomery Road, Lower. Happy New Year to everyone. I'd just like to let the school board and the district know, and I'm sure you're aware, sent you an email to neighbors in Montgomery Road and Cedar Lake regarding our attendance with, in a meeting with the district and Lower Gwinnett Township. And wanted to give you a summary of those meeting minutes and I'll leave that for you to review. And I would encourage you to give me a call. I'm happy to answer any questions people have. But it relates, you know, to the earlier discussions we've had, nothing's really changed. We've tried to help do some detective work for you so you can better understand the issue that the district is, is trying to deal with and what we're having to live with. And that was presented to you back in November. And I'd encourage you to go through that. Understand the dilemmas that we're facing. So what I'd just like to summarize for you now is that I'm here regarding obviously the middle school chiller and the necessary abatement problem that we're trying to address. And you might be thinking, hey, I thought we addressed this. We're, we're doing a wall. And that would take care of it. You know, unfortunately, you know, the wall that the district is pursuing, with the best of our knowledge, okay? And from our discussion with the district, is not going to mitigate the noise sufficient. According to the district, we will still hear it. And I think that was one of the things the board was concerned of wanting to address. So the proposed wall is being engineered by the same company that installed the chiller originally improperly and not to cope. Unfortunately, you know, and the district's also their consultant has a potential conflict of interest in designing and verifying your own solution. Consultants' two reports contradict each other. And that were, were not performed at a hundred percent load. You recall, we were doing a load study in April at fifty-six degrees Fahrenheit. And in August, in the morning, at sixty-eight degrees. And that will not approach test, you know, assessing load. And yet, claim is they're achieving a hundred percent load. So we are here to be updated on the progress with the chiller design study. Progress on the design study approved on December fourth hasn't been shared. We attended the facilities meeting and didn't hear anything there. So we're hoping we can hear something here and really hoping that the questions that you guys asked previously might be addressed in this or we might be informed when those questions would be addressed that you had raised.
Great. Well, the time is up, Mr. Cruz. If you want to send us anything additional in writing, that would be great.
Yeah, I hope that if it comes up, we'll talk about.
Hi, good evening. This is Michael Honer, Lower Gwinnett resident, two kids at Lower Gwinnett Elementary. I know this Thursday, we received something in the mail last week. There's going to be a open public notice over at the Spring House Innovation Center. They're talking about putting something along the lines of about three hundred apartments right off of Norris Town Road, kind of by the Amblody Y and the Innovation Park. And I haven't really heard the school or the board talk about this, just at a time of concerns around population and the kind of student to teacher ratios. I've been reading up a lot of some concerns at the middle school. Just kind of wanted to get a sense of if this is something that you guys plan on addressing. If any board members were going to be present at the open house later on Thursday. And just would love to get a sense of how that's going to affect, again, enrollment and any concerns that we might have as we kind of start to reach capacity at the district. So just kind of bringing it to the forefront if anyone is unaware of it, but I know you guys don't tend to speak at these kind of discussions, but thought I'd break it up to the, to the board. Thanks for the time.
Does it get like submitted to?
Amy, the microphone in the boardroom is off. I didn't hear anything that the last person just said. And I, and you're, you're muted also. The boardroom microphone is, is off.
Give us a minute.
There we go. It's back on now.
Okay. Can you hear me okay?
I can hear you now. I couldn't hear anything the last speaker at the podium said.
Okay. Well, it'll be recorded, correct? Okay. So you'll be able to see on the recording, Rosetta?
Well, it was off, so it won't be on the recording either.
All right. So we may have to essentially still look into it, but you can hear, you can hear us all now.
I can hear you now.
Is your mic working over there? Everybody's mics are working?
Yeah.
Okay. Rosetta, you can hear everybody okay?
Yep, now I can. But when the speaker was at the podium, the little microphone was red and it was off.
Okay. Well, to make sure that the one at the podium is green. Okay.
Thanks.
Sure, of course. Okay. Um, all right. So then we have seven point two, which is the list of committees. The change, really the only change there is Eugene will now be our Chair of Health, Wellness and Safety. But no other changes otherwise. All right, moving on to, are there any comments or questions about those? Nope. Okay. We'll move on then to our superintendent report. Jim?
Thank you. Just one item for review tonight, and that is the, the good news that we are going to have Miss Danielle Hay continue to work with us here as the Director of Human Resources passed July first because her current contract expires June thirtieth. And the resolution is a new, and this new contract for Miss Hay and, and her, her role in the executive leadership team, also known as cabinet, is indispensable. And so a very, this, and I think this is an extremely important step in the district's continued And so a very, this, and I think this is an extremely important step in the district's continued parent or priority of finding and securing services of high-quality cabinet members. Search now for Assistant Superintendent, blocking out Miss Hay for five-year contract starting July first will be a very, very solid.
Great, thank you, Jim, and exciting news. So thank you. Any other comments or questions? All right, then we'll move on to our Assistant Superintendent Report.
Thank you. I just have one informational item, sharing a recap of the professional in, in-service day, the professional learning on January seventeenth, where our faculty engage in professional learning on a variety of topics. Depending on the, the content area or, or grade level in which teachers exist, there were various topics ranging from working on the science curriculum implementation and resource planning. We talked a little bit about how the new science standards are being implemented. There were teachers who were engaged in learning about creating, collaborating and inspiring using the power of Canva and artificial intelligence. AI has been a topic that we've been engaging in professional learning for our teachers for quite some time. That session helped teachers to think about using these tools and supporting their students in the classroom. We also had some of our teachers engaged in learning focusing on math instruction. And we talked a little bit about that in terms of thinking about building and retention and algebraic reasoning and math instruction. And another area included some of our specialized programs and services. Staff engaging in training by Lakeside staff that focused on neurologic, which helps them to understand the brain and how the brain responds to trauma and what supports students might need in response to having certain experiences. And so that was very well received as well. So that concludes my report.
Great, thank you. Any comments or questions? All right, Stephen, thank you again.
Item ten point one anticipates approval of a settlement agreement between family A and student A twenty-five and the district. And we'll be asking for board approval of that action at the meeting.
Great, thank you, Jeff. Any comments or questions? All right, then we'll move on to Board Secretary Report, Jim.
There are five minutes for this month's approval, the December second annual board reorganization work session, December ninth regular board meeting, December ninth audit committee meeting, a January thirteenth communication meeting, and a January thirteenth facilities and transportation.
Great, thank you. Any comments or questions? All right, the treasurer report?
For approval this month or the November and December treasurer's.
Great, thank you, Tim. Any comments or questions? All right, so we'll move on. Thank you again. HR report.
All right, good evening, everyone. For your review tonight, there are seven items under section thirteen of the Human Resources Report. The first three action items include resignations, retirements, appointments, changes of status, level, leaves of absence, extracurricular changes, volunteers and spring extracurricular assignments. Item thirteen point four is for classroom assistant on special assignment. Item thirteen point five is a contract for an interim supervisor of special education. Thirteen point six is the approval for conference attendance. And finally, item seven is the holiday schedule for the twenty-five, twenty-sixth year. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Great, thank you so much. Any comments or questions? All right, Stephen, then we'll move on. Thank you. Communications Committee, Zappy.
Good evening. We did have a meeting for, on January thirteenth, we had quite a few members present. The topics that we covered was Kristen, our Head of Communication, shared with us getting to know the school board videos, which were launched starting last week. I believe the last one went out today. And the, you know, the idea was to have that be introduced in January, which is School Board Recognition Month. The other topic we tackled was the district budget one-on-one video that Kristen's also working on. Budget is a very complex, multifaceted aspect of what we do. So we're trying to put some educational materials for our community to learn more about it. So that is in the works as well. And then lastly, we talked about Read Across America. We're actually doing a couple of programs with our local library to kind of bridge our community with the library. And there's going to be a lot more offerings at the library and connections between our community and the library, which I'm excited about. But we are also going to be doing a reading event at our, at both Ambler and Blue Bell for Read Across America in March, so very exciting times.
Great, thank you, and I'm looking forward to the Reading Across America event. Any other comments or questions? No, all right, well, thank you for that report. I will move on now to Curriculum and Technology Committee, Dan.
Um, well, Dr. Dewan, do you want to take this one?
Yes, thank you. We do have one item that's an informational item and the others are items for review that we'll seek approval at the next, at the next board meeting. So for our informational item, we have a comprehensive plan that's now available on the website and is available for review for thirty days for public review. And then we'll seek approval from the board at the public board meeting on March third. So there's plenty of time to gather questions and reach out if you do have any questions. Essentially, this is a process that every district is required to move through every three years. And you develop a comprehensive plan to identify ways that you're continuously improving in terms of leadership, teachers, teaching and learning, and all of the efforts that you have in place to help students to be successful essentially. So our comprehensive plan, in a nutshell, in terms of a high-level nutshell of what are the areas that are being focused on, would include the academic areas actually that you heard this evening in terms of English Language Arts, mathematics and science, because we know that there are areas that we need to grow in terms of improving our instructional practices and honing our skills around supporting our students' needs. Other area, I would say, classifies under school climate, thinking about behaviors and how do we support improving the behaviors in our school? How do we ensure that the climate and culture of our schools are positive? And so that would be the fourth area that you see in the comprehensive plan. It's a, it's a pretty lengthy document in terms of fifty-something pages. But that's a very high-level overview of what is in that plan. And it's derived from looking at all of the data, as you saw and you heard some of the data conversations this evening. This is not the extent of the data conversations that we've been engaged in, though. We engage in data conversations all throughout the year with a variety of committees and teams. And we use all of the information and the feedback and the thinking around those tables to help design some of the action plans that we need to put in place to support our students in those academic areas and in the areas, in, in the areas that are going to support school climate. Again, thinking about behavior and, and school culture. Again, it's now available on the website and we'll come back to the board at the February-March board cycle, seeking board approval on March third. But are there any questions at this time?
Yeah, I started going through it. And I'll have a lot of questions. But I also did a quick check on a couple of different districts. And I noticed that everybody does this very differently. So it isn't a standardized kind of methodology? Or do we have some freedom on what we need to do?
The comprehensive plan process that's required from the Pennsylvania Department of Education is highly structured and a part of the future-ready comprehensive planning online system. So it is very defined, the data that we have to use, the process that we move through in terms of identifying areas of strength and areas of need in order to, to develop the plan. So every district has to go through that process using that system. And so we pull from that system to provide the, the content for the comprehensive plan.
It was just interesting because every school's documents were not entirely different, but not carbon copied like in a, in format. Okay, so that's fair. And then so they're up on the website for thirty days. And then our public knows to, our community knows to make comments?
They're welcome to make comments. They're welcome to reach out with questions, absolutely. They can contact me, Munyewi Dewan, M-Dewan at W S D W E B dot org.
Great, and I'll follow up with my various.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. Any other comments or questions? Well, thank you so much for that.
Oh, and we have three items. That's right, we have three items for review this evening that will seek approval next week. The first is two students, we're seeking out placement services. And so that's listed here. I sent information to the board about this item as well as the settlement item. The, the next item fifteen point three is seeking approval for the reconciliation bill for the MCIU for our Age of Beginner Program. We've talked about this before. We actually had a prior amount that was approved by the board. And what happens then is as students have different needs and other services are required, then we have to reconcile the bill. So there is an additional approximately six thousand six hundred plus dollars that we're seeking approval. And the last item is we'll be seeking approval for our extended trips from the Wasaken High School athletic team and their, the clubs and activities that are listed. Some of them do require students to, to qualify. But we are seeking approval so that we can know in advance that the, that the students are able to attend. And then we'll take it from there. Any questions on those items? No, I'm sitting with you. Thank you so much. Thank you.
All right, so we'll move on then to Facilities and Transportation Committee. Tim, could you take us?
The meeting started with an enrollment and capacity request presented by Dr. Chrisfield. Based on the dip and projections, it was decided we would engage Montgomery County Planning Commission for next year's projections. Next was an update on the Knight Road project. Lower Gwinnett Township would like to partner with us on the project to complete stormwater work north of Brookside. We would advertise the project and have their work as an alternative. The committee then reviewed the capital plans as part of the budget and the five-year plan. Part of the discussion topics following on the capital plans, it was decided that we would go out to RFP for an updated capital plan. We reviewed the new work order system, advised the committee about plans to review our current building automation systems and complete an internal run energy audit. And finally, the conversation was started with regarding to adding EV charging stations at the transportation site.
Great, thank you, Tim. And first, with regard to enrollment projections, something that one of the speakers brought up, which you and I did discuss previously, we don't anticipate there being any major concerns with the project that is possibly going to happen in the future, correct?
So when I actually, I actually had a conversation with the individuals that are building that project. The concern was with us originally on how many students that would come in and what that would do to our enrollment capacities when going over them. I believe they said the minimum rent, the quote-unquote workforce rent was about three thousand dollars a month. They are also building one and two-bedroom apartments. They typically do not have a large enrollment impact. They did a study, they actually did a project in Upper Dublin and they got less than thirty students out of that project. I have asked and worked with the township for their projections based on the Upper Dublin, the capacity and the information with the Upper Dublin. So I am monitoring that situation, but the way it was explained to me, it's two, three years old.
Thank you.
Sorry, I just would like pushback on our Board of Supervisors or whoever's giving us this information. In New York City, in one-bedroom apartments, we had entire multi-family generations living in them. So let's not assume that as it's one or two bedrooms, we're not going to get an influx of students. You know, demographics can change, financial situations can change. I wouldn't, I wouldn't go on that premise. I would keep monitoring that very, very closely.
It did look like in three years, you're saying three years till they're building?
Two to three years.
Yeah, the Lower Gwinnett projection, the Oregon Elementary, which that's what would directly affect, or that development would directly affect, looked like it was going down enough that we could handle some, at least some influx of students. So I think that's good news. The biggest two classes are moving out, you know, now and next year. So I think, yeah, I mean, I think we're prepared as we can be in terms of knowing what's coming and seeing that. Thanks, Tim.
I'd just like to add to, generally, that is consistent with projects of that size, that unit size, that typically there's not a lot of younger children that are residing in one and two-bedroom units. So I mean, there's exceptions, of course, there will likely be some, but I would say that on average, that's about, about.
In the Upper Dublin community, that's, it's very similar to the ones going in here.
Yes, it is both by the same group. That's why I asked for their impacts. I haven't received that again, but if I get it, I'll look at it, see if there's anything we need to discuss about it.
And just for, just for reference, when you say Upper Dublin, that's the, on Welsh Road, is that the?
The Promenade in Dresser, is that the complex? Is there a reference?
All right.
Great, any other questions or comments? All right, thank you so much for those reports, or that report, sorry, the Facilities and Transportation. I will move on now to Finance Committee, Steve.
Yep, there are going to be five items. The November and December approval of financial reports, the November and December approval of payments, and then an additional item to pay the tax collector that collects our taxes. Just a reminder, Amy brought this up earlier, which talked about future meetings, but we will have our first budget workshop on the tenth of February. We're looking forward to the informational video that's going to come out on the budgeting process. Just a reminder for the community, it's only a small portion of our budget that is discretionary. Vast majority of our budget is already spoken for, be it salaries, education materials, et cetera. And so they're often decisions that are round. It's made discretionary items. It's great to kick.
Thanks. And we'll start the meeting with the Super Bowl victory. Exactly.
Yeah, and I would remind the public, you're welcome to attend these budget workshops. They're very informative. Steve did a great job last year, his first year's chair, and he did a great job. The meetings are broken down by particular topic area in our budget. So it's really informative and you get to know a lot about our budget by coming to those meetings. They're long, but otherwise are very interesting.
All right, any other questions or comments? All right, then we will move on to Policy, Marshall.
Thank you, Amy. We have one informational item this evening. It is in regard to Policy six-ten relative to standard purchasing procedures. And for that, I'm going to seek insight from Tim and Eric. I told you. Aren't you doing this?
I, I can take, no, this is Policy six-ten, the big one where we have the new bid public bid thresholds.
Yeah, so every year we have to update the bids based on PDEs and the state's allowances for what allows us to not go out the bid, what requires us to get three bids, and then what requires us to go out to a RP type. This update allows us to maintain those numbers.
Great, sorry, confused. Guys was all I want, so. Appreciate it, and that is all I have for the evening.
Great, thank you. Any comments or questions? All right, thank you again. Oh, sorry, racial equity oversight.
Thanks, Amy. We met on January twenty-first. We had a great meeting in which we received a presentation by the administration on special education identification. Is that wrong? Dr. Dewan, could you please share?
Yes, thank you. That evening's focus, as you mentioned, was on special education identification and specifically looking at some of the data on our district's website, which is available on the district, the district's equity dashboard. So Ms. Latour joined us and showed, she actually took us to the website so that we could see the data on the data dashboard. And then we engaged in some conversations and learning about some of the changes, some of the changes. And then we engaged in some conversations and learning about some of the changes, some of the needs in our, in terms of special education and the sort of changing landscape that we see specifically around the emotional support program and our emotional support classes and the increased needs that we see among our students. And we also talked, as we always do when we sort of dig into these topics, is thinking about some of the possible root causes of why we see discrepancy in our data. And so Ms. Latour walked through some of that information for our committee. And then she talked about the ongoing process of monitoring referrals. When we think about the disparities we see in our data around special education, specifically within our emotional support program, understanding and ensuring that we are looking at the referral process to make sure that there are no missteps in that process is something that our team is continually taking a look at and engaging with our Department of Student Services, our special education supervisors, our director, our psychologists, our behavior specialists, principals, counselors, assistant principals, all of those individuals that are a part of that process is important. And so she spoke at length about that. And then, as always, those committee meetings include time for the committee to give feedback, insights, and additional dialogue around what what our staff who are on the committee are seeing and what our parents and community members are seeing. And so that, that was, that concluded that period. That concludes this report.
Great, thank you.
Great, thank you so much. Any comments or questions? No? All right. Well, thank you again. Health, wellness, and safety. Jean?
Yes, there are no informational items or action items at this time.
Thank you. And we'll now move on to our Report of Board Representatives, Extracurricular Marshall.
Thank you. The second marking period Extracurricular Committee meeting took place last week. As you know, we review proposals for different organizations within the district. And I'm happy to report on several of those tonight. At the high school level, there was approval by the committee for a mental health awareness organization, which merges two proposals. One was called Student Organization of Mental Health Awareness, and the other one was Morgan's Message. Both began to promote health and wellness amongst our students and staff, and that was approved. We also approved a real estate club. Well, actually, I shouldn't say. What I should say is, we used to have a real estate club. It has come back in order to become a formal club once again after it had not received the membership numbers that it needed. What we're going to do is, we are going to keep it as part of the bonus block in the third marking period. If it receives the number of people interested and people want to do it, then it will get reinstated back of going forward. So that was the second one at the high school. At the middle school level, we approved the Black Student Union Cultural Group. We often do for many different types of organizations that want to bring awareness to different types of special or distinct groups of students in the district. That was approved as well. We also discussed flag football. This was approved recently as a P I A A sport for twenty-five and twenty-six. And so it is essentially switching over to a varsity sport. And so we are looking at how to transition advisors to coaches in that regard. And then we also again looked at the bonus block to see how I E clubs could fit in with that period of time to make sure that there is ample time for them within that period. And we hope that there will be ample time for some of these I E clubs that want to add additional time in there. So that was sort of an overview of what we did and what will be coming up for this.
Great, thank you so much. Any questions or comments? No? All right. Well, thank you again. New clubs and sports. All right, the M C I U report. So we just met this past week. One of the most, I think, sad things that I heard at the meeting is that there's a pretty significant deficit for early education, early intervention. About two million dollars. And other intermediate units are in the same position. M C I U is working with the P I, P A I U, looking for efficiencies in their budget. They're talking to legislators. But, and they said they realized this already back in June, but they thought they'd be in a different position by now. So it's a pretty, I guess, significant deficit for us to have at this point in the year. And I guess, and maybe one of you could explain better, Marshall, Ma Was. There's twenty-nine Ma Was in Pennsylvania, mutually agreed written agreements. They serve the area, like, we serve four thousand students within the Montgomery County one. I don't know if you're familiar with them. Yeah.
You need to do a Google search.
But apparently Philadelphia is one of the twenty-nine, and they, no one can hold their contract. It's now with a private organization, L, so that came up as part of this discussion about this deficit that we have here in Montgomery County. More sad news, for those that even know him, Dr. Landis, who's our Assistant Executive Director. He came during one of our meetings, I think for professional development, right? He's retiring. So we're going to have vacancy there. He's been in education for over forty years. And so, yeah, end of June, he will be done. Something not sad, there's a diversity in education job fair coming up on Monday, March third, in Lafayette Building. For anybody interested in attending that job fair. And something else they brought up that I was wondering if it's something we can partake in or if it's just for teachers and staff within the M C I U, and I didn't think to ask it at the moment. But they have affiliation agreements with different schools. They mentioned they have a new one with Cootstown, East Stroudsburg. And they said they have one in St. Joe's also, where there's like discounts available on the tuition. So I don't, I, like, I didn't think to ask if our teachers get to take advantage of any sort of discounted programs. Okay, great. All right. I think that was, yeah, all of my notes. Any questions? All right. Then we will move on to North Monaco.
Thanks. The meeting was last week. Two main points of that meeting, for one, review of the budget. And that review will be happening over the next couple of months. In addition, they're, they have engaged a company to review the facility and look at options within the facility for either expanding space layout, et cetera, in order to address these issues. So we'll also be reviewing that assessment.
Great, thank you. And when do we start talking to our students about the programs at North Monaco? I was surprised. We drove by North Monaco the other day, and my seventh grader was telling me about all this stuff that goes on at North Monaco. And I was like, how do you know this already? Seventh grade. When do we start exposing students to that?
Well, we, we recently talked about the shift in when students can enter into the North Monaco Technical Career Center. And because they can now start in ninth grade moving forward, there are more conversations happening at the middle school to help students to have an awareness of the, the programs that are available at the North Monaco Technical Career Center. So that's wonderful to hear. That's great.
I think that also gets highlighted at Career Day.
Great. Well, yeah, I'm glad to hear we're raising awareness of the programs there. That's awesome. All right, P S B A liaison.
Yeah, so this past week, I, or last week, rather, I attended a P S B A representative meeting that was online, which basically was about utilizing resources available to us. So that was kind of interesting. It sounds like they're doing, trying to do a lot more in that regard. The other thing I wanted to mention is at the beginning of this month, I met with Representative Missy Serato, who's one of our representatives in the district, and talked to her about special education funding and funding the unfunded mandates. That's, the other thing I talked to her about was the Medicaid reimbursement and how, you know, the multiple hoops districts have to jump through to get that. And so she had some concerns around that. Dr. Dewan and I had a meeting about some of those concerns, and she, Dr. Dewan was able to help outline some, maybe some solutions or like requests that would make it easier. So I have emailed Missy, and I'm also trying to set up a meeting with her and Representative Handish. So this is something that I've sort of become passionate about, which is trying to advocate for funding for districts because as a board, we can only do so much with limited funding, right? If we're not getting special education funding that we need, then are the other seventy-five-ish percent of our students are missing, are getting money taken from them. And so like, I'm not saying that people don't deserve their services. They do. I'm saying that everyone deserves an experience here, it was again, and in all our public schools. And that starts with more funding from the state. And so that is an advocacy issue that I try to take on.
Great, thank you, Deanne. Any comments or questions? Thank you for holding those meetings and having those discussions.
That's interesting. And I have nothing for E R C. Thanks.
Okay. All right, then that will move us on to the second public comment period. The Board appreciates hearing from the community. We allow maximum of five speakers to be heard on the same topic. Please limit comments to three minutes in the interest of fairness and in order to treat all speakers equally. It's the Board practice not to engage in dialogue with speakers. When appropriate, we will follow responses on the board docs. When approaching the podium or speaking online, please state your name and your municipality of residence and the topic on which you are speaking. All right. I think we have two for. Mr. Rudolph, you had put both first and second. Did you do your comments just in the first section, first? You did. Okay, because you were the first one that actually was on the top of my pile before. So do you want to go ahead? This is, okay. Irene Lewis? The green?
My name is Irene Lewis, and I live in Lower Guinean. Good evening, Board members and Mr. Bricker. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I'm here to discuss an important issue, the chiller system at the Wisahickin Middle School. First, I want to acknowledge your work and dedication to addressing the concerns of our district and neighbors. It's clear that you do care about the community and want to do what's right. Which is why I feel confident in bringing this matter to your attention again. As we prepare for another summer, I'm concerned that we are heading toward the same challenges we faced last year. None of us want a repeat of the noise issues caused by this chillers, especially after the acoustic blanket solution we waited for all summer failed to deliver meaningful relief. This is why we believe that we need to rethink our approach and ask some critical questions. So, Mr. Bricker, I hope you'll, you'll consider our concerns. Number one, the root cause. Do we know what originally led to the decision to abandon the water-cooled chillers in favor of air-cooled chillers? Would it be feasible and cost-effective to revert back to water-cooled systems? Number two, expertise. Shouldn't we consider a more experienced firm to ensure we're exploring all viable solutions? Relying on the same consultant who provided ineffective advice last time may not actually yield best results. Three, cost-effectiveness. Has the district done a thorough analysis to confirm that the approach is truly the most cost-effective option? With tight budgets, it's crucial to ensure that we're, we're spending our money wisely. Four, outcome evaluation. While I understand the sound barriers being designed, I'm concerned that it won't fully resolve the issue. Mr. Bricker has already noted that the noise will persist. Have you considered how we'll determine whether this newest solution is effective enough? Will the neighbors have input to confirm that it's good enough? Lastly, I urge the board to consider the potential conflict of interest in relying on the same consultant for both designing the solution and verifying its effectiveness. Bringing in an independent expert could provide fresh perspectives and build greater confidence in the outcome. I request that you revisit this issue.
Can you keep it a comment? Is there anyone online?
Yes, we have one hand raised. We have Parmena Taylor.
Okay, Parmena, you can go ahead and unmute yourself.
Can you guys hear me? Because I'm in a car.
Yes.
So I just wanted the, the board to be brought to the attention that I did a right-to-no request on like fifteen different items. I was denied three. Oh, my God, almost got, I almost got hit. I was denied three, and they were all three questions that only you as a district could provide. So I just wanted to make you aware that whoever between South Tannings, the firm, Mr. Bricker, they went through extensive lengths to demean me in writing about my request and still tried to say I shouldn't be able to get the information. So I'm going to give all of you board members a copy of the right-to-know response that I received, what I was denied with, and now I have to appeal the, the Office of Open Records decision to the Court of Common Pleas. I'm going to pay the fee to go to the Court of Common Pleas because I think it's absolutely atrocious that there's so much lengths to ask simple questions. So I give you a teaser. One of the questions I wanted to know is, other than last year, what was the superintendent's evaluation status, meaning between proficient and distinguished? What about the previous nine years? And your district's response was, we don't have those records. If he is being evaluated every year, and it's either distinguished or proficient, would you get to see the Kermit year? Why wouldn't you have his evaluation records for the previous years? And they denied me. The second question I asked is, if he got proficiency, if he got proficient or distinguished for all the years prior to this, he has in his contract that he gets an increase at any point with a proficient or distinguished rating. And so the issue is, Mr. Bricker said that that, if I'm asking for previous increases in his salary, that means he has to calculate for me. Someone in the district calculated whatever his percentage increase was each year, but we were denied that information. And then the third denial was about Title One parent meetings in Shady Grove. That is a federal program. I used to work for the Boston Public School System. I am fully aware that when you have a Title One school, you have to have documentation that there were actual meetings conducted by parents for parents. I was denied that information. So the question is, oh, the denial was, we don't have it. The district doesn't conduct these meetings, but because it's a federal program, you still should have the records. So I just wanted you to know, I wanted the public to know what an acrocity it is to be denied information only the district can provide. Thank you.
Thank you, Parmena. All right. Next in person, Rob Walker.
Good evening, Rob Walker with Payne Township. This is the third time I've presented. It is about the lights, excuse me, it is about the project at Blue Bell Elementary with the construction at both the school, the parking lot, and the bus depot. The lights, as reported last time, are still on. I've been told that the interior lights will go off at eleven P M unless they are for an emergency. So my assertion is, suppose they've been on twenty-four hours a day, that they are emergency lights. The exterior lights are on all the time. They've never been turned off since they've been turned on. And the project used to, excuse me, the school and the bus depot had a total of four lights. Now they have twenty-five. This is all essentially in my backyard. There is a new parking lot in between the school and the bus depot. And that unfortunately causes cars to pull into the parking lot, shine their headlights into our kitchen, and then turn and then head out, which then you see the red lights. That becomes particularly disconcerting when there's things at the school in the evening, like dances or events. This is, just to put it in perspective, equivalent to me driving to one of your homes with my truck shining my lights into. with my truck shining my lights into your bedroom and possibly turning them off at eleven AM if there's. Just to give you perspective. Bear with me on this because it'll make sense in a second. The school district has an initiative out there called Wake Up and Learn. It's on your website. It's a fantastic initiative. About sleeping. It's about children getting the proper sleep so they can get up and learn, so they can be their best. My daughter, who's in sixth grade in middle school with Wissahickin, her back window looks directly at the school. She is now suffering from sleep anxiety. She goes to bed at nine o'clock at night. So the lights are on whether, so the lights are shining into her bedroom, whether they turn off at eleven o'clock at night, and they have not. There's lights moving because of parking lot into her bedroom. And now there is also buses beeping when they're backing up because of bus depot, and the buses run periodically at night, for whatever reason. I don't know why that is. This affects four Wissahickin students that are all neighbors of ours. Two of them are. The loudspeaker in the back of the school still talks about birthdays and pledges of allegiance and the bus schedule that we hear all day long. That has not been turned off. And there are two dumpsters that are rarely ever closed and are blown trash into the woods and into our backyard. The only thing I've asked and denied is a time to meet with someone on my back patio to see what we're dealing with, to come up with some type of resolution that's good for you and good for me. I'm not asking you to break the budget. I'm not asking you to spend millions of dollars. I just want a resolution for this.
Thank you. Is there anyone online?
There are no hands raised online.
Okay, um, the Mr. Rudolph.
Again, Eric Rudolph, Lower Gwinnett, attention. I'll echo what Mr. Walker just said. Wish you could be in our backyard to appreciate. We feel, we will feel in four months, absolute disturbance of peace as children. And they go on at six o'clock in the morning and they stay on until nine o'clock at night. That's unacceptable. Key questions, and I really appreciate the board engaging. Truly, they do. All the board members, the questions we heard was, how did this problem start? Okay, we got an answer. Water cooler broke over at the middle school. And it in turn seemed to break all the, the chillers. Okay, well, then how did, the new system we got is now, for some reason, is larger and noisy. That's not appropriate. And that's a question that was asked by, or really posed by the board, and we've heard lots of hearses. Oh, it might not. The, the refrigerant can't be handled anymore. I think that's hearses. It was too loud. I think that's hearsay. Son had, took classes in that room no more than five years. So the next question is, is, that came up through the board, is the solution robust? Does the proposed wall meet the requirements? And does it have the appropriate safety? In our conversations, we don't know. And we should. That's the question you asked. You shouldn't. And is the solution a better solution? The board previously suggested getting a second opinion. We know there are larger, more experienced firms specializing in this type of noise mitigation that the district needs to engage. It would likely result in more, more robust and effective plan. And another question that came up when we were talking about the wall from the board was, what's the end goal? Simply adding a wall won't fix the problem. The noise negatively impacts the students, the staff, the neighbors, and the community. What's needed is a solution that restores the middle school grounds to a safe, quiet, neutral space. So we are here because this noise problem affects our quality of life. We want to ensure the district uses its resources. So appreciate everybody engaging in it. I really ask you to pursue it and let us know what you're going to talk about. Because this first design phase, I believe, for your request, was to get to that, what the answer is. Because what, we're looking forward to somebody telling us what that is. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else online?
There are no hands raised online.
Then we'll close the second comment period. All right, and we'll move on to board comments. Any fellow board members have any comments? Lee, Deanne, you did share with us some exciting news for a Lower Gwinnett teacher and you want to share that out with everybody?
Yes, sure. So if you were watching the Eagles game, that was just yesterday, wasn't it? Yesterday, you might have seen a Lower Gwinnett teacher, Mrs. Williams, and her son, a fifth grade student at Lower Gwinnett, Jaden Williams. They were surprised by Commissioner Goodell with Super Bowl tickets. Hotel and airfare. So they are headed to the Super Bowl, which is amazing. Jaden is an incredible boy who has undergone a lot of things this past year with his mom. And so it's a great, it's a great surprise and reward. We're very happy for him. And he was, and my kid said, there's a fifth grade Lower Gwinnett chat. My son said, the Lower Gwinnett chat is blowing up. And everyone was like, I saw you on TV, Jaden. They were so excited.
Well, that's really great news. So thank you for sharing that out. Anyone else need comment? All right, then we will, I guess, have a motion to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.